Call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bethland Houlihan. Hand. Yeah. Mary Branley.
Here.
Natasha Rivera.
Here.
Jessica Clark.
Hope she is muted. Colleen, is she, is she?
There we go. Thank you. I'm here.
Okay. Um, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ryan Haas.
Here.
Colleen Andrade. Wayne White.
Oh, he's muted.
Okay, I'm here.
All right, and do we have, um, is Jen got out with us?
No, she's watching.
She's not, right? Okay, all right. Um, so, um, good afternoon. Actually, it's not really yet. Good morning. This me, open meeting of the Maynard Public School, I'm sorry, this is one of the general scripts. I don't, I can't find my specific one. Is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, Maynard School Committee is convening via Zoom web conference as posted on the town's website, and it identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Um, we are now turning to the first item of the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your name until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please, well, that's not a possibility, so let's skip that part. Um, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, uh, no public comments, so da-da-da-da-da. Finally, we will open this meeting with a roll call. Natasha Rivera.
Yeah.
Uh, Mary Branley.
Yeah.
Bethland Houlihan.
That's.
Jessica Clark.
Yes.
Okay. Meeting is now open at 11:40, and we are discussing, um, the statement that we need to release or send to the Board of Selectmen regarding the article that will be on the special town meeting warrant. Ryan or Wayne, do you want to? We've, we've read the statement, and we've seen the spreadsheet. Is there anything else you'd like to add to it before we discuss?
No, I mean, just as a point of clarity, I think. So everything on the spreadsheet and, and the narrative obviously just mirrors the spreadsheet. Those are items that are related to COVID that we anticipate needing. Some are unknown, so there's some anticipation built into that, which have been covered by a variety of funds. Pretty much related to additional funds coming due to COVID. So the ESSER, the CVRV, and the CARES Act, those are all additional types of funds that have been provided by the federal government or the state government. And it totals a lot of money, as you can see with the spreadsheet. But when you have a school district and you're looking at staff and you're looking at kids and PPEs and everything from adding, you know, assuming, so we sort of took it from a couple of different approaches, the spreadsheet and what we might need. We took it from the approach of if we were full in return, where we anticipate being, you know, months in the future, to a hybrid model, to a fully remote. So we don't need everything on here right away necessarily. It really just depends on where the health and safety metrics are. But we anticipated everything from, instead, I'll give you an example, just so you're clear, like, we put building substitutes. So the difference between a building substitute and a daily substitute. One, we hire now and we have in the building every day because we know we will need them. The other is, we sort of play the odds and we make a phone call in the morning. We don't like that option in this time because we want whoever our building subs are to be trained in health and safety, and we want to minimize our bubble, if you will. So they're the ones that are here every day, like our teachers and staff. So that's something that's on here. Nurses, you know, we added, obviously, we wanted to add more nurses. Bus monitors, that wasn't something that was even a recommendation early on. So there are things on here that we have built in. And a lot of what we've asked for, we've funneled through all of it, quite frankly. Those three funds that I mentioned. We've asked for more by a few hundred thousand dollars than those funds total, which is why there's a 494,000 dollar differential. Of that 494, 265, 422 is part, is town deficit that we're responsible for. So we were, we are, in this memo, asking for relief from that so that we could potentially do more. It's kind of that simple. We will do. And we can prioritize this. So we asked for, if I recall, I'm looking, six building substitutes, two for each building. If we didn't, if we have less money that we are able to allocate, maybe we end up with four and we place them strategically based on which building may have more people out. Or if we end up in a situation where every building isn't back in a hybrid model, then we may only need four. So there's, there are still some moving parts even within this. But I think, um, given the questions, I think you understand the memo and the spreadsheet in the sense of, here's what we're asking for as related to COVID. Here's what they total in terms of expenditures, and here's where the money's coming from.
Okay. Great. Um, do any of the members of the school committee have any questions? Natasha.
Hi. Well, first, I was gonna say, if you could share it with the public a little bit, because I know we're talking about things that the public doesn't have access to a little bit. I don't know if we can screen share the recommendation or the COVID-related expenses. That was my first thought.
Colleen, were the materials posted on, on our website? Is there a link on the website?
I actually cannot remember. I'm looking for the file so I can share it.
Okay.
So in, in the interim, so, Brian, did you want to add something before I popped off my questions?
I was just gonna say, if Wayne wants to respond to anything, he should feel free. If, uh, any clarity that he can provide that I might not have, he's welcome to, uh, hop in there as well, in terms of answering any of your questions. Just so he's, you know, feels part of the team.
Yes. The, uh, Brian covered everything, uh, and obviously, we have spoken, uh, many times on this, this subject together. And, and again, the only thing that I would, uh, highlight additionally is if we assume that the, the, the virus and the way we operate continue for a year, some of these funds run out, cut me from on, Brian, in December 31st.
Correct.
All right, and you haven't found that money tree yet?
I'm sorry?
Might be in the court.
You haven't found the one?
Yeah, I'm looking. I'm looking in the courtyard every day. I found some interesting birds.
So I guess what I was, oh, thank you, Colleen. I guess what I was wondering is, because it sounds like what's built into this is a lot of would-like-to-haves. Like, you talked about the building, building subs, six versus need-to-haves. And, and so I think if we're proposing a recommendation that includes would-like-to-have versus need-to-have, I don't think that's going to be received well. Because I think at the town level, they're also going to be cutting things as well. Or if there could be some type of clarification in the, like, need this, but why these other, you know, like, again, I just go back to the first line, the building subs. Why six versus three?
I can answer that. I don't think any of these are overly luxurious. If we think that two, we do think that two build, uh, two additional building subs per building is totally reasonable, given what we don't know about the virus.
Okay. And also to your question about, like, earlier, you talked about, some of this is for hybrid versus remote, right? And so that's the part, um, so the, the top section, essentially, on page one is in consideration of a hybrid or onsite model, right?
Correct. Which I am saying, we will.
I think the whole document, isn't it, is based on, uh, the hybrid model. If we were to go, uh, 100% remote or go full, would we have to revisit this, Brian?
If we were to go full remote, we would revisit this. However, knowing that even if we're full remote, the full remote is time-sensitive till the numbers tick down and we're feeling like we have, you know, people are safe, we would then revert or transition to a hybrid model. So we, I mean, we can play this out a couple of different scenarios. We start remote, we may not need some of what's in that top category in September, October, but if the numbers remain low and we transition to a hybrid model, then we would need those.
Got it.
I wouldn't recommend that we necessarily say we don't need them at all. We may not need them in the next two months.
The goal is to keep them, we anticipate going onsite at some point in some model, so we obviously need to be hiring or, or taking preliminary planning efforts to account for those costs and staffing that we will eventually need.
That was our approach, so yes, we agree with that.
Okay, anyone else?
Very well done, very well done, as far as just showing what we're looking, how painful this will be for us to, to take, if we have to take that $265,000 cut.
I, I did have another question, but I'll wait till everybody else circles through.
I don't see anyone else raising their hand, so.
Yeah, Bethland was.
Oh, she was? Bethland, how come I never see you?
I don't know, I was just about to say something, but we're, we're a chatty group, so sometimes, I'm, I'm, I need to just talk over people. Anyway, so. I'm sorry. So I guess the question I'm, just want to get clarity on. I know that you all have, um, needed to be able to get to this point, to be able to identify the additional costs. Can you help me understand why, why we're at this point now? Like, is it because, just why we weren't able to provide this information sooner? I think that would just be helpful for the town to understand, so it doesn't feel like we knew this and we didn't share it. And I know that's not the case, but just to understand why this is able to be clarified and, and laid out now and not sooner.
Because it's a great question. And just so people know, much of the recommendations on here come from the recommendations from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which have sort of been coming out every couple of weeks through the month of June, July, and even in August. In terms of what do they recommend, transportation, for example, which would be our bus monitors, was one of the very last things they put out. It's not a bad idea, but I don't think anybody was typically budgeting bus monitors on a typical bus. Or how many buses you would have to run, given the health and safety restrictions on how many students can be on a bus. So that's really, this has been being thought about in terms of just, yeah, we'll probably need more custodians. Like, that was an easy one for people to say, that makes sense. And we probably knew that in March. But a lot of these are related to what's come out from the state, and they have been slow to put that out. So that's why. Good question.
And then that, I had one other question, and that's it for me. It's just trying to understand the distinction between the different pots of money that we have available, because I thought ESER was within the context of CARES. So there's also separate CARES as one, emergency, and the other is just kind of addition, I guess I'm just trying to make sure I understand some of the distinction among the pots of money.
And I'm gonna let Wayne define the differences, because I, I see your point. So the, my understanding is that the top one, the ESSER, is the emergency money that is part of, but not inclusive in the CARES Act. It's part of that overall, uh, legislation for that money, if you will. And then there's the CARES Act that went directly to the town, that we put money, we, um, submitted to Chief Stowers.
Yeah.
And then there's the emergency, um, or the CVRF reopening money, which is yet a different pot that they've created. But I'll defer to Wayne as the financial expert on this definitions of each. Unless he decided that that was a good enough explanation. And he might, no, that was okay.
Okay. Actually, no, it is, Brian, again, because for people that don't know, in our daily conversations, we have had that exact conversation, um, of the different pots of monies, and there seemed to be some overlap. But, but Brian, um, explained it well, and that the, the ESER is a part of CARES, but as Brian said, uh, the distinction, uh, is there. And the C, I have to look myself, the CVRF is specifically for schools reopening, and that is based on enrollment. We got approximately $225 per student, uh, as opposed to the general CARES money, for example, went to the town. And that's, uh, part of the money that is being monitored, if you will, by the chief. And that we have to kind of send things through him. He's kind of collating those expenses through the town. But you're right, it is confusing. I, you know, try and stay up on it as much as I can and, and brief Brian, but that's, I think Brian captured it all.
Okay, and so the, the money that we're, that's being asked for as additional costs, those aren't covered under these particular, um, funding that's through the grants?
You're exactly right, and that was one of the notes. Again, Brian anticipated this because he'd asked a question, and I said, other than as listed, um, these expenses are unfunded.
Yeah.
Except for the things that, that we, we listed, which is why we were thought, we would try to ask for some relief from the, the 265, 422. Because between, to a certain extent, them being unfunded and potentially some of them dropping off, uh, and at the end of December, I think we're already at a financial disadvantage.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, that's helpful. That's it for me.
Thank you, Wayne. Mary?
Um, just one more question, Brian and Wayne. So if we were to have to absorb this whole 495,000, what would be the priority of which some of the cuts would go to? Has that conversation happened yet?
No, we'll take this, once we get the answer really from the Board of Selectmen of what that number is, then we'll take this back to the admin team and prioritize it.
Thank you.
And with that impact, whether or not we could open? Like, I guess that's my other question. Is any of this contingent on being able to actually reopen in some capacity? Like, Astric, if we don't get this one funded, then we can't actually reopen them?
I would say no. I would say only because we're not anticipating being able to open fully in person.
Yeah.
Even without getting everything on here, we'll be able to open in either a hybrid and/or a remote model and safely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just for history too, and Lydia, jump in here from last year. So, um, last year, when the budget, when we were talking about the, the budget and that, we were talking that what was going to happen was part of our deficit. At that time, the total deficit for the entire town was going to be approximately $900,000. And half of it, the town was actually going to absorb under the general stabilization. So now the town is at half of that for the 442, of which we represent the 265. And the town decided that, um, they're not going to take any of it from general stabilization. So we're all, you know, taking a hit from it. So that, that's the difference in conversation. Yes, we're talking about half of the full deficit that we were talking about at the end of June. But at that point, some of it was going to be absorbed. So that's why we were talking in terms of maybe we could get the town to absorb some of this, because they were in that mindset anyway, so.
I think also, just to add, you know, which, um, the general stabilization has been expanded to include the feasibility study wholly, which is different as well. Right? So, so, so although we are not getting relief directly from budget considerations, we are having some, I want to say benefit, but the town, the school department is having benefit by, the general stabilization supporting the feasibility study to be able to move forward. So I don't know if you would consider that a trade-off or what, but that, that was a shift a little bit. But I do have a question about, um, because what we're, what we're saying here, essentially, Brian, with your recommendation, is that we are asking to not be, to bear the burden of the, the, this, there's the town receipts. Because that's what it is. It's the town's, um, shortcoming of receipts. And one of the things that I, just listening to last night, is that there are, we, we budgeted very conservatively, and part of that has excluded possible revenue options that the town will receive as the year progresses. Which doesn't sound like we, the school department would get relief when those revenues come in. So we're being preemptively, which understandably, the town needs to balance their budget, but we're being asked to preemptively cut our budget. But then the possibility that they could get relief or increased receipts or marijuana tax that would offset those losses might not, might not provide relief to us down the road. So it's a little bit of a, I don't know, a conundrum there. Because I know that they can't really budget for that, but there is a possibility that these deficits will be, I want to say rescinded, but not play out as the year goes on.
I agree with what you're saying. I've had that conversation with Greg as recently as yesterday. Um, and if you want my take from him, so I would say that's an avenue worth exploring with the Board of Selectmen and seeing if they agree with that. I also think they agree with you in terms of the feasibility study, that they've really taken on, taken that on entirely. So I think they do, to some extent, look at that as, uh, you know, we've done this for you, you, you can handle this. I think there's a little bit of that in the mindset as well, although there's a pretty significant reimbursement for the feasibility study coming, which replaces that, which I don't want them to forget.
Right, and this is all town money. I mean, that's, to be clear, is like, student, student services, education is a town service. So similar to water, all those things. So it's really the larger pot of money is, should be, um, it's the service we're providing. So we're basically, by underfunding the budget for the school department, we're saying that we are, um, reducing our, the service capability that we can provide to our students.
All right, anybody else? Are we good to vote?
So I guess the, the question is, what are we actually voting on? Are we actually voting to?
Well, so.
Five?
Yes, that's the vote, and if we agree to ask the town to have that revoked, this would then also be our statement, um, for the warrant article where, um, it, it is going to ask the town to approve the general stabilization budget.
So basically, this would be where we would not recommend, we would provide a, a no recommendation to the reduction of that part, is what we're saying. So in, so basically, town leadership would not be on the same page, potentially. I just want to frame it in the context of, because this is going to go to the FinCom on, on Tuesday. They're going to provide their recommendation. So the sponsor would be the, the Board of Selectmen. The FinCom would provide their recommendation. So it could potentially be that the school would be not recommending, and those other parties would be.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it appropriate to share this and make this as a recommendation, but not to go against the town boards? Just to make it part of the equation, because to Natasha's point, I think being on the same page as town boards, moving ahead in these uncertain financial times would be important and probably beneficial to us come the bigger budget season that's approaching. But I think this is a, this is absolutely accurate and fair information to share with them and ask, but not necessarily draw the line in the sand on this, if you will, and be at a different point for the town. That would be a question or a suggestion.
Yes, that was sort of the conversation that we were having with Greg Johnson too. So I really like, I like that direction, Brian.
Yeah, I mean, I know we've done a lot of hard work to bring us, try to collaborate as much as possible, and I, I don't think it's beneficial for our town. I don't know, I don't know the right, I don't know the right answer, to be honest. But I, I do think that it does put us in a, in particular, uh, special town, meaning we have so many other sensitive matters that are going to be up there. Is it worth that, um, taking that, digging in our heels about for what you could potentially lose in relationship building down the road?
Bethland, you look like you were going to say something.
Yeah.
Now you can see me, right? Yeah, yeah, it's very hard to tell how I'm feeling. So the, the question I, one last thing that I asked before, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So I apologize that some of you may have had, been more involved to understand some of this better. And as you've been putting this together in various subcommittees and stuff, but, so the, we, does this list, so say, they say you've got to figure it out. We, we, we really, we get what you're saying, but we can't do it. And you've got to get rid of that 265. So then, what you're saying is that, I guess, what's the impact of that? Because I think that they'd want to know then, what's the impact of that? I think that that's something that might be implicit to anyone that's putting that out there right now. But like, um, if we don't get that 265, then that's not the difference between reopening or not. It's just hard to get what the value add is at this point, or if it's just value add, or if it's really like, then we'll feel, everyone will feel really like we've done everything we can and it will allow us to X, Y, and Z. If we, like, for instance, the bus monitors, I recognize, I recognize the value of that after looking at what the kids need to do on the bus and how it's like, I heard, read one article that said, trying to get second graders to social distance is like trying to keep frogs in a wheelbarrow. And that's what I see on the bus. They're going to be like hopping around. So, um, God bless that bus monitor. But, so there's a real, it's not just a nice to have. There is a real implication for adherence to being able to, to keep. adherence to being able to, to keep to those, those guidelines as best we can for everyone's safety. So that's the kind of thing, I guess, I don't feel like is represented right now in the request as it's written. And I don't know that they're going to, the other boards, other folks are going themselves have that, have that context without us providing it.
Do you mean like clarifying the impact a little bit better?
Yeah, yeah.
We can do that. We can go back and just say, if we don't have it, these are the things we potentially won't be able to do.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will say, like, last night at FinCom, there was consideration that Ken made, said, oh, well, maybe it's cheaper to do remote. So that is the mindset, just so you're, just for some context of what, you know, questions might be asked going in. So just an FYI.
If we're strictly talking numbers, he might be right, but is it the best thing for the kids?
Exactly.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So then, if, if we aren't looking to dig our heels in the sand, I need to present something to the Board of Selectmen tonight. So, we need to be in agreement on what that message is. Do we agree that we would like to be relieved of the 265, 442? Or 422, whatever the number is?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So.
I'm not totally in agreement. So, I, I, I don't know.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to process, because I'm trying to figure out what our next step needs to be in order for me to give them what they want tonight. So if we aren't going to make a recommendation for the article, this isn't as dire a situation, because, I mean, they've got to get it printed, and they've got to, you know, do their recommendations. So, would people be okay if Brian were able to put together an impact statement to go along with the materials we already have, and I could share that with the Board of Selectmen tonight? Or do people want to see the impact statement before we go ahead?
I'm comfortable with him doing it, and just sending it off. And that was one of the options that Greg had mentioned, too, was for us to get together, and then for Brian to put together a letter, and just showing them what we're, you know, not, not declining on the recommendation or making it that specific, but just to dire need, you know, this is what we were urging you to, to do. Because I think it's important for them to see what we're struggling with. That would be just.
I mean, ultimately, it comes down to town voters, to be honest with you. Let's just, I mean, so they present whatever their recommendation is. Town voters, you know, ultimately can say, no, we do not recommend, you know, to accept that, or, or whatever. I think it's important for us, to your point, that we clarify the impact of what that means, so the town voters have an understanding of what accepting this revisited budget means for the school department. And so that could potentially help at town conversation for, you know, that, that would be my thought as well, just to support educating the public on what that cut would mean if it passes. I would also want to think, yeah, the Wi-Fi stuff, too, because I know that even if we do remote, maybe balancing it against, because that was, you know, we still have other costs in a remote environment that are not totally, you know, net zero. So that might be helpful to also highlight, that even in a remote environment, we still have subscriptions and all of these other things to think about, you know, proceeding with, I don't know if the Wi-Fi is part of that reason as well, to support a remote. So maybe highlighting that it's not just cheaper to do hybrid and there's no cost remote, that there also are costs. And that was one of the comments that another FinCom member made last night as well.
So, okay, so that brings up another point, the Wi-Fi, which they are also going to vote on in, as part of a capital improvement that would come out of the, the capital improvements account. And so, in asking for relief from the 265, do we want to reconsider asking for that 72,000 for the Wi-Fi enhancement?
I mean, we're not, it doesn't sound like we're going to get the benefit of the reimbursement.
No, we won't.
Not that it's, I mean, it's town dollars, so, you know, either, or we try to fund that and then not do the other proposed cuts, and so therefore, we might get the reimbursement directly?
I think there's a lot to weigh here.
Is it possible, Brian and Wayne, that we would be able to fund the Wi-Fi from the school department budget and?
No, we would not want to find another $72,000 at this point. Not at all. And plus, that money will not get related to COVID expenses, because it was on the books long before COVID, so it doesn't apply.
Right.
And I confirm that with the chief, Stowers, who's sort of become our local expert on what we can apply for. So I would leave that one where it is. And it helps the, so the E-rate reimbursement, it's a great reimbursement, but it's got, it's heavy in terms of the accountability piece and how you have to apply for it, and when it has to be spent by. So Adams, Adam Steiner, our tech director, has this all lined up, basically, to go as part of a multi-year plan to include increasing the bandwidth and the Wi-Fi at each of the buildings, which it is connected to remote learning, so that's absolutely true. If we hadn't planned it a year ago and had it on the books, we could make the argument that it's part of COVID, but we can't go back and do that now. And for the short money that it is, I would not want to own it in terms of the school budget, because that's not short money to a school budget, but to the town budget, it's already built into the capital, sort of as a separate pot, if you will. So I would move ahead with that, because I think it will help the town and the schools. So I think this is sort of a two, a win-win, if you will, for the town and the schools, and there's a little bit of a reimbursement.
So the town, the town will reap some benefit also, Brian? It's not strictly for the schools?
Yeah, they would get the reimbursement.
But they also benefit from the service, from the bandwidth?
I think it's in the schools, I sort of just equate to the schools being part of the community.
Okay.
I wonder if we could put that in the recommendation, or add that also, that the, we anticipate, like, because I know you brought it up last night, Lydia, but we can maybe add that as we do anticipate a reimbursement or some relief coming from, because I don't know if the Board of Selectmen understood that. And so that might be helpful to clarify to them, that we do have a, whatever that amount is, and when that could be anticipated, so that there will be replenishment of the capital stabilization account. Is that possible to add to whatever recommendation is proposed?
Was that, I'm not, is that question to me or Lydia? I wasn't sure.
I was, well, to, I think you, you're writing the recommendation, so I would, I would.
Mr. Brian, Brian assumed it was to me. I think, Brian, if you're going to write it, or you and I can write it together.
I mean, I can use the memo we have, and the memo that I sent you about the Wi-Fi, and put them together into another memo, if you like, and add an impact part. We can sort of adjust our spreadsheet, if you will, so they can see what the differences are. I mean, and some of what's in there are anticipations.
Yeah.
And we won't know, quite frankly, probably until school reopens, because one of the biggest expenses on that spreadsheet are leaves of absence. We arbitrarily picked a number, based on staff, based on, you know, just hearsay, but we don't know, because they haven't had to turn that in. And that's a, that's a big number. So if we lower our anticipation on that number, we look a little more imbalanced.
That's a rolling number, too, right? Because anyone can take a leave, I mean, they don't have to, you know, you could get sick, your family could be impacted at any given moment.
Right. So we just arbitrarily picked a number.
Could also go the other way, though, too. We could have more anticipations.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
It's a gamble.
Right.
We can certainly add, we can adjust, add an impact statement, pull, add an explanation of the Wi-Fi, and send that out to you later tonight. It'll probably be late afternoon, just looking at the schedule.
And I'm also, I'm just going back to what Natasha had said earlier, too, which is that, you know, there is talk about the marijuana revenue, about 129 Parker Street, potentially, about Summer Street, and the, you know, the development that's going on there, that we're not necessarily going to reap the benefit of, but it would help the town. So, you know, not that we want to say that necessarily to them, but I feel like there's more upside maybe on, on the town side than, this, this is our number, this is what we've got to work with.
Mary, to your point, I think, you know, hearing about how they're building policies and how there's this unspoken, or, but we've implemented the 60-40 formula, that standard can't be only applicable for expenses, it really needs to also be applicable when there are reimbursements potentially. So, I mean, to be honest, you know, why would the school department not benefit from a 60-40 when there are refunds or reimbursements that come in? And, you know, you know what I mean? So it's, it just seems to be the standard needs to be applicable, and more than just expense-only situations from a financial impact. So I think, you know, talking about marijuana, you know, if this reimbursement does come back for the Wi-Fi, why would we not want to say it's a 60-40 split, you know, for, for that? I don't know, just a larger conversation as we fine-tune how we are applying the financial standards and the policies that are being discussed at the town.
I think, yeah, we can have further conversation about that, Natasha, at the Budget Subcommittee meetings, too.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, if I could, add something.
Yes, Wayne.
About both the budget and this list. You board members know better than I, since I wasn't here, that there's not a whole lot of fat in this budget. I bring that up only, and people talk about, can we fund the capital of Wi-Fi? Can we take a $265,000 hit? You know, you built this budget, or approved it, you know what's in it. There's not a lot of wiggle room, and we're trying to provide a service to our students. So all of a sudden, to take away $265,000 and expect to be able to deliver the same level of service, I, I don't know financially how, how we're able to do that. Even 72,000, maybe to the town, that might seem like a small amount, but when you're operating on a razor-thin margin, $72,000, I look at it, that's a teacher. That, 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 that's unfunded. And the things that we put down on the spreadsheet in terms of COVID additional cost, you know, when you ask this, and what we're trying to present is, we don't know what's going to happen. We can't, if we severely underestimated, and we got into this, and we were way underfunded, rightfully so, you'd look to us and say, why didn't you plan better? You know, why, why is the shortfall so big? So the things that we have put in here, we feel are realistic. For example, looking at the absenteeism, you know, we went back and looked at historical records to see, okay, how do we, where do we come up with a number? How do we plan for this? So things like that, we feel are realistic. Also, we drew from feedback that we've gotten from some of the calls that Brian has had, with kind of getting a general sense at how comfortable educators are with this plan. So you can kind of get a sense that somebody, whether it's zero or 10, but some, some, some people are going to say, I don't want to come into a classroom. And we, as the administration, we have to plan for that and continue to deliver as, as much as we can, a high-quality education. And so, again, I don't want you to think that this was pie in the sky on the spreadsheet.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to add, and I apologize for not passing this information along, I, to the school committee, so there are also unexpected expenses that we didn't account for, that we couldn't account for. And for instance, the AC in the server room died, and a server room cannot operate without AC. So we had to spend over $8,000 to replace the AC in the server room, and that came from, I mean, we hadn't accounted for that. So there's, there's like, there's no margin of error at all in our budget. And so that 8,000 is now going to have to get divided up from other areas, or, you know. So, I mean, we, we really, we are bare bones.
Basically, our maintenance, our lines are not really robust enough, either.
To add to that, thank you, Lydia, for reminding me, there was, Brian, you remember from when we had a meeting with DPW and fixing the bathroom sinks? You know, at first, in a regular environment, you're like, okay, you kind of tape that sink off and say, don't use it. But in the COVID environment, you can't decrease access to hand cleansing and sanitizing, you need to increase it. And Justin warned us that he didn't have enough money at the town level to do the entire job, and I think it was like $4,200 that I had to approve to hit the operating budget as kind of the cost overrun.
Wasn't there a capital, approved at town meeting for the Fowler and the Green Meadow capital expense?
That was approved at town meeting.
I'd like to hear more about that offline.
Yeah, we need to look into that. Thank you, Wayne.
Those are the kinds of things that I'm saying when I say, understanding impact. And I get that, I mean, I know, but to be able to, to put some of that more, I think that's not as represented as clearly in your ask right now. It sounds more like a, it would be really nice if, you know, I, I mean, and I know that you, just adding some more of those pieces, I think, would be helpful, and to say, so that we can contextualize this for people that aren't doing it every day, even though they've been trying to understand, and they're very, we've had a lot of great collaboration, I think it would just be very helpful.
Also, preschool tuition, I, I know that, is there discussion about the reduction in preschool tuition budget? And I don't see that on here as an anticipated loss. Is that something worthwhile highlighting that the tuition?
So it's not on max spreadsheet, because it's not a COVID expenditure?
But I'm just wondering if it's worth, again, for the contextual impact of all of the things that we are encountering related to COVID? It is a COVID-related consideration that it's happening. Would we want to add that potential that we are also facing reduction in our own, very few revenue considerations? And what we, what our actuals versus what our forecasted are coming in at?
Be getting less revenue from that, also the revenue from the functions and that that happened that we.
Building rental.
Yeah, all the summer stuff, we lost. So I think that would be great to highlight as well, how much we, you know, compared to last year, what revenue that we did not pick up over the summer, that would normally fill some of these coffers, that we could, maintenance coffers, that we would be able to work off of.
Okay. So, school committee, I just want to say, I sent out this spreadsheet a few days ago for us to review, and I asked for questions then. In the future, can we, can we have these ahead of time, so that he could maybe give answers for us during the meetings? Because now, we're going to be delayed a little bit.
I think some of it, we can't hear until he explains it, right?
Okay. Someone needs to mute their phone. I hear a lot of background conversation. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. So these were, his, his recommendation, Brian's recommendation, was shared with us yesterday, was it?
Uh, was it yesterday? Brian, I can't remember when you sent it to me.
Looks like it was put in the folder.
I think it was Monday, I think Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I put it in the folder, and yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, I know it's a time, I know it's a short timeframe, I just, because we're so back-to-back on decisions and needing to pass long information, and we have. and we have, like, no spare time at all for these things. Just the, the sooner we can get questions and, and things for consideration, the easier it is for Brian to get that information to us so that we can make the best decisions possible in a timely manner. Okay, so where are we now on this? We're going to wait for Brian to make a statement. And we're not going to vote. We're just going to provide a statement for the BOS that this is how the two-sixty-five, four-forty-two will affect us. We would prefer to not have to pay it and do with that what you will. Is that what we're saying?
I think, yeah, if you add some, a little bit more context there, it would be helpful.
Well, I'm just, I'm, so for tonight, are we, I guess my question is, is, are we providing a statement that requires a vote from us to then present to the Board of Selectmen? Or are we just passing along information? And then when I'm at the meeting tonight, I can just say, yes, obviously, we would rather not have to pay this two-sixty-five and this is why, and it's going to affect us in these ways? Or do we want to make a statement and vote on it that says, please do not make us pay this two-sixty-five?
I mean, I, I think if, if the, with edits, you know, with the additional information that Brian has been diligently making note of in his notepad right there, I would say it would be helpful, maybe, that we do vote and say that, I don't know, maybe we, we provided relief and then maybe expand on the reasonings, you know, why we feel that would be difficult. But, and if they want to have a joint meeting or whatever, I mean, we're going to be on Monday at FinCom. You know, that, I'm sure it'll come up there.
Oh, definitely it will.
They have to have a final, I guess they have to have a final version on the eighteenth. The Board of Selectmen is what we were told, so.
Yeah. And I can schedule a meeting, a joint meeting for the eighteenth because I'm sure nobody has anything going on that night.
I, I think to, to, to vote and, and have a, have Brian do a impact statement and, and ladies, you know, include this, the spreadsheet and say, this is what we're looking at, without any other surprises. And we would strongly encourage the selectmen to
Understand and.
Yeah, just understand, you know.
Reconsider.
To reconsider, if possible, and put it, if possible. That way, we're sending it strong message, but we're also not, like, you know, really heels in the sand, so.
So, Mary, devil's advocate, you know, we go in our budget subcommittee meeting and they say, okay, where should the money come from?
Yep, that's.
You know, and so I, I mean, I just, you know, want to understand because I anticipate that would be a question. Like, where do you expect, you know? Do we want to say that maybe we would revisit it at some point when, 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 when revenue, because, I mean, the revenue can increase for the town at any point. So it seems so finite that we're making a decision now that's going to in fact, impact the whole FY twenty-one when there's all these other unknown considerations that are, could, again, lose the deficit, not hap- Oh, Jessica, it needs to be unmuted.
I guess, well, initially, we had talked, again, about the money coming out of general stabilization. So, you know, that, that could be one, one direction. I know that we've, that we're now, the feasibility study is coming out of that. But, you know, it's probably going to be seven-fifty and then at least fifty percent of it, fifty, fifty-five percent is going to be reimbursed in that, which will bring the stabilization fund back up to two million. So, and where that was the previous conversation. But that's, that's what I would say.
So typically, I'm one to, like, play nice in the sandbox and say, like, please reconsider. We would love it if you did. But in a situation like this, where our teachers are already telling us they don't feel safe, they don't want to go back, and these are all safety-related expenses we're requesting, I don't feel comfortable just, like, delaying this further and further. And I don't know, that's just where I stand.
All righty. Yeah, I think that we, if I were on the Board of Selectmen, I would want to know where, have us vote on where we stand and what we're asking for and what we feel like is, is, is needed. And if we want to ensure that they're safety, I see everything here is related to ensuring that. And so, and we, and we can still be clear about the context that maybe it is, we say, let's revisit in December. Maybe we pick that that's the date, or we say, let's look and see how things are developing. But this is what we're requesting and, and they could then choose not to do that. And we've had this conversation where we, there's a lot of difficult choices and we're all well aware of that and working really hard all together to consider that. And yet, knowing everything I know and all the conversations we've had, it still feels like they understand that, too. And even within the context of that, what would we say here for this particular thing and what we need to do? And we vote.
And also, to add to that, Beth Lynn, I mean, the FinCom has made it very, very clear that they, they want to know from us what our financial needs are going to be in addition to, you know, the normal. And given that the governor has decided to level fund our budget, which technically is not level funding, but until November, and we won't know what the FY twenty-one budget is until November. And now I've totally lost my train of thought. Oh, that they really want to be as supportive as possible. And so I think giving FinCom as much information as possible and, and letting them really understand where we are, you know, that could also affect their recommendation on, on this article, so.
I mean, ultimately, we are advocates for the school. That's what our role is. And, and so, I mean, in the broader scheme of town considerations, you know, and I, I think that that is the best position when we think about how we support student achievement, health and safety. Those are the, the top, you know, things, priorities. And I think this recommendation falls, you know, checks those boxes the best that we can. It's not, you know, doing it, you know, cutting would impact those three areas monumentally. And so I, yeah, I would, I would say that maybe we would recommend, and if, again, if it, if, if the FinCom has a different recommendation or if the town decides to go with it, then we have to obviously revisit a conversation on what that two-hundred-and-sixty-five might be. Or maybe it's less. Maybe they're comfortable taking out a hundred thousand dollars additionally from general stabilization, right? And the burden might be less. I don't, I don't know what that might be. There's a couple of possibilities that might help us, but I think it can't be just maybe all or none. And this is where the sixty-fourty formula is working here. This is where it is. So we're, we're basically saying, we think sixty percent absorbing the town's sixty percent deficit is too much for us to bear.
Okay, we need to vote because we have yet another meeting, one o'clock.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. All right, I will entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation from Superintendent Haas and Wayne White with edits noted that provide better context of shortfalls. Is that about right?
An impact?
An impact.
Yes, an impact. For the, regarding the article presented to, to be at town, town meeting.
Second.
Oh, shouldn't we say, and we're asking Superintendent Haas to put together a letter, an impact statement?
Well, as I was saying, with edits of impact.
Okay, so that's incorporated into it, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so Jessica, you seconded?
Yes. Yep, I seconded.
Okay. All right, vote by roll call. Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Okay. Motion passed. Now we have a quick other matter to discuss. If there's no objection, this is something that came up. And for the solar array leasing committee, is that what it's called, Brian? Solar, yes, okay. So the solar array leasing committee, the school committee needs to have a representative on that committee. It doesn't have to be an SC member. We can appoint someone to be our designated representative. I do not know what this committee entails, other than just reviewing leases and informing the committee, school committee, as to what the decisions are being made in terms of getting the solar panels installed.
Would that be, maybe Wayne would be helpful? I mean, not to nominate Wayne. But I'm just thinking, I know Michelle was really part, you know, really the budget piece. He just, he doesn't get all laggard off right now.
Wayne, are you already on it?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought you were. Um, well, I don't know. Wayne, do you have any?
Sorry? I didn't hear, was there a question?
Are you comfortable with that?
I'd have to find out more. I mean, if that's what you want me to do. I, I don't know anything about it. Maybe it's because I'm new, I haven't, or maybe they've been in conversations with Brian, but I haven't been privy to the conversations.
So they also do want somebody from the superintendent's office?
Do they want both, a school committee member and a, someone from the superintendent's office?
And Gortisaw, and Public Works, and Town.
Oh, okay. So we still need somebody else, even in addition to Wayne?
So I, Brian had suggested possibly Maro because she was part of the conversations last year. And, and she has voiced an interest in continuing to help in some way. So if you guys are okay with that, I will reach out to her and ask her if that is of interest.
Wonderful.
Okay. So Brian, is that something we need to vote on or should we wait? I think we probably need to wait until we hear what she has to say, right?
Yeah, I'm going to ask her first.
No, I'm just going to tell her.
Before you just vote her in. It's just a suggestion.
Well, I'm just also wondering, is there, so are they looking for someone who was a school? Because I know that there might be other people in the community who might be interested in, in that as well. So I just want to understand the, what the role, is it supposed to be someone who was?
It's just, it's a school committee member or they're designee, period. And it's just, you know, basically someone who will help with the leasing process and keep the school committee informed of the progress.
Yeah, Maro seems like a good, I think that's a great idea.
Are there any other suggestions for people? Because I could reach out just in case Maro says, no, I have absolutely no interest whatsoever.
The only thing that I thought of, I know that there's, there was some, I know some of these, like, folks are already maybe on the MSBA, but I don't know if anyone from the Green Meadow Future Committee, because I know that that, some of those members, like, that group is kind of disbanding. If there are any, I don't, and I don't even know what it entails, to be honest with you. So I don't know, do they meet, what frequency do these, this meeting happening? Yeah.
All I know is it's an evaluation team. I think it's probably short time with some input.
It sounds like it's reviewing contracts. Is that what it?
I, all I have from Greg is it's an evaluation team to rank and to look at the proposals according to set criteria.
Lydia, maybe start with Maro, and if she's not interested, then we can kind of come up with a thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation, but.
Is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, great. So with that, we now get to, unless, Brian, there's anything else urgent that has arisen in the last couple of days?
No.
We are going to, I will accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make.
Oh, you guys all want to stay?
Okay, no, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can go to our next one.
Go to our next one and yell it, Riley! All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote. Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Jessica Clark?
Yes.
Beth Lynn Houlihan?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to our next one.